Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our May Watership Plan Commission meeting. We have the agenda up on the screen. If folks would like to take a look at it there, and it looks like the first thing we have up is approval of agenda in the meeting minutes. Do we have any modifications to the agenda or the minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes as included in the packet?
This is Commissioner Shea. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and do we have a second? This is Commissioner Casilius's motion to, never mind, I will second that motion. All right.
All right, thank you. I will take a roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shea.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yerling.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, that motion has passed. We can move on. I think just as I was jumping on, I heard that Troy was maybe on vacation. So who we have for our Scott SWCD report today?
And Chair, I can kind of jump in and just kind of do a few highlights from the SWCD report. So as you can see, the technical and cost share requests are kind of creeping up. They're close to April. But as you notice, we can take a dip in the winter months and we're coming up out of that. So we'll be probably hitting our peak, you know, here soon in summer. So that's good to see it kind of staying pretty higher or coming out of that that drop. Next, on April 12th, the SWCD hosted a webinar called Lawns to Legumes, and they actually had pretty good attendance. So 29 people attended. And then as of May 4th, they had 54 views on YouTube. So pretty, pretty good there, I think, with having 29 people attending that class. They also finalized the Roberts Creek Sub-Watershed Assessment. So Roberts Creek is in the southwest corner of Scott County. That that assessment, it's still under review, so we don't have a copy of it yet, but we should be getting that soon. And that's something we have been working with SWCD on. I'll jump down to the tree program. So if anybody ordered trees this year, you were part of around a record-setting year. So they sold almost 37,000 trees and then 109 seed mixes. And then they do sell trees at the event, too. So they may be even eclipse eclipsed 37,000. So now they're switching gears and they do have a live native plant in seed sale that started. And so if you are interested, it's the plugs or the seeds you can order through them. I have ordered some in the past and they're actually, they're very good. And they'll be distributed in mid-June, looks like June 17th. So if you're interested, you can go to the website and put in an order. Precipitation nearly about average for April. So, you know, last year being a little bit drier, it's kind of good to see the precipitation coming back around a bit. Erosion control inspections, much like the cost share requests come springtime, those obviously go up quite a bit. So they're getting out in the field and looking at, looking at the sites and making sure that they've got their erosion control BNP's in place. I won't go through any of the wetland stuff. Equipment rental program, so Troy explains as well, but it's, yeah, we're just starting to get into the, you know, the spring of this year and getting our equipment used. However, this, you know, usually looks pretty low up until the fall and then it, you know, they'll jump up. So it's not alarming or anything. We're just kind of getting started into it. Costure grant status, so we've got lots of costure available. So we've got our awarded amount and then our balance. So, you know, between the SWCD and us, we've got nearly 700,000 in costure dollars available. So we got lots of money for, for projects at the moment. And then here's some of the projects that were, that had an action on the, their May meeting. And a few of those, we actually noticed are part of our meeting as well. So we've got quite a bit of actual screening committee applications or sporadic today. So with that, I'll stand for any questions in your house.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to Melissa's project updates.
Madam Chair, the, you mean, did you mean the, my updates?
Oh, it has MBE after project updates on for me. So I was going off of that, but
Yeah, we're actually on item three.
Oh, my gosh, I was looking at Ryan. Okay, yep, sorry. Vanessa's update.
Fully empathize with the confusion. Appreciate your patience. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I just have a few updates for folks today. I know one, just letting folks know, we are continuing to work on that watershed management study, that collaborative effort with Pirate Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District and the SWCD. We do have a technical panel coming up here at the end of June to kind of take more of a technical look at some of the improvements and coordinating efforts that we've kind of come up with. So at this point, you know, we've kind of drafted some of what we have thought were some of the best options we have to kind of improve watershed management in the county. And some of those are collaborative. And, you know, some of those that we evaluated were, you know, possibly boundary changes or moving organizations around. So at this point, you know, we've kind of come up with the whole list and kind of evaluated each of those. So now we're moving on to the next step of bringing that to the technical panel and the steering committee. So we've been working on that pretty frequently and pretty high and heavy. We have been working pretty actively as well on the McMahon Lake Outlet project as well as the McMahon Lake Improvement District activities that go along with that. And some of that is really connected to helping two of the property owners. They're called the Class Two Property Owners, the Pouts Family and the Jerrison Families at this point are the ones that have reached out, helping them kind of go through the process of reducing the runoff issues on their properties so that they can get removed from the lid. And that's taken a substantial amount of time, but we do seem to be helping them work forward on that. Melissa will have more updates on the McMahon Outlet project and how that's going. But I just wanted to touch base on those lid efforts. The third thing I wanted to just kind of throw at you guys was that we're starting to get into some of our technical training time of year as well. So I did attend technical training to maintain my wetland professional certification. And I did a technical training through Bowser a few weeks ago, early in the month for installing and maintaining monitoring wells and wetlands. So it was fun. It was something I actually hadn't done before. It's a new skill, I guess, I add to my little roster as well, but it was also a really useful and interesting training. So we'll have more trainings that we'll get to update you guys with throughout the year. And then the last one, I know the last meeting, we talked about changing up how we're doing our meetings, you know, moving forward. Now that things have kind of started to open up and what's kind of a longer-term plan. And I know everybody kind of settled on hybridized meetings moving forward as probably the most popular first option. So I did look into that, and that is absolutely something we can do. So moving forward, we will start doing hybrid meetings. I will verify whether or not that'll be in June or July. And I'll send an email out to everybody, just letting you know whether we'll start that in June or July. But we'll start by just doing some hybrid meetings, letting folks, you know, choose whatever works best for you, whether you can meet back at our old haunt, if you remember, that is back in the boardroom at the county board, at the county board building. So that's our old haunt. Or if, you know, you're not able to, or it doesn't work for your schedule that day, to attend in person. You know, just attending virtually. And so that'll be our option for now. And like I said, I'll get back to you guys in just a couple of weeks as to whether or not we'll do that in either June or starting in July. And those are my updates for this month. And I stand for any questions.
All right, thanks, Vanessa. Any questions for Vanessa? I realized we didn't get as much rain as other areas of the state, but I was wondering with the McMahon Lake, are we high again? Is anybody starting to flood? Or, and if Melissa's going to get into that, too, we can just hold off on that.
It's high, but it's not, as Commissioner Shea, it's high, but it's not, it's not as high as it was by any means. Last year's drought really dropped it down. So
Yeah.
It's up from last fall, but it's not nearly to the levels that it was before.
I was about to actually say, Commissioner Shea, would you be willing to pipe in your, your thoughts on that one? You probably have the most recent.
We might have. I don't know if it was my sound going in and out, or if that was Commissioner Shea's or, so I missed some of that, but I kind of caught it. It sounds like it wasn't as high as it had been. So that's good. If people are concerned about yet. Um, okay, if there are no other questions, then we can move to ongoing business with Ryan's project updates.
Chair, we should, I should have a brief update, but first I wanted to double check. Commissioner Phil, did you happen to join in on a cell phone here? I just want to make sure we know if you're present or not, or I guess who that is. Maybe after my project updates, I can look that up. I'm guessing, oh, there, Commissioner Phil, is that you? I'll continue with my updates and then we can go from there. So I just have two for today. If you remember, we've had some ongoing maintenance and coordination for our Phase One stream bank project. It's it's the one just click and get some feedback here from the phone. There. All right. So this is the site that's right next to ridges at San Creek, the golf course, just south of Jordan. And we, there were some staff turnover and we weren't able to do the maintenance over the winter, but I did get some of our public works department out there a couple of weeks ago, and they do feel as though it's still something they can handle. And but we're going to wait. So now that field got planted. It's really difficult in the spring to try to time getting in there and trying to do the work before, you know, the renters in there as well. So sorry. So we're going to wait till the fall, and then we've got basically all winter to do the work. So I'll coordinate with the renter and the landowner and make sure, you know, that when, when the crops are out, that we've got access to it and complete that work. So hopefully this year's the year we can, we can kind of finally get it done. I'm looking at the site. It really isn't changing. So there's not a huge concern as, in terms of if it's getting worse, it is not getting worse from my observations of it. So that's good. So if you remember, it was kind of optional whether we had to go in there and kind of do the work anyways, but it is something that we feel as though we should do at some point. So so that's on the horizon. Only other update I have is we have currently an EPA grant. And the representative that we've been working with on our old EPA grant and this, this current one that we have, his name is Jordan Donatell. He was recently promoted. So he is no longer our representative at MPCA. We've been assigned Brittany Foss. So we've had really good luck with all the representatives at MPCA. So I would assume we're going to have the same luck with Brittany moving forward. So those are kind of the two updates I have. So if there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? All right, let's move on to Melissa's project updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ryan, can I share a graphic really quick? So just to show you quickly, the most recent lake level reading was taken today. And the red line depicts the ordinary high water level. So you can see the lake has bounced up back to about the ordinary high water level, just to show you where that's at, since that question was brought up. So I'll stop sharing and you can share the agenda again, if you'd like. I have several updates. So we had our kickoff meeting for, with WSB, the engineer that we're hiring to do the design for the McMahon Lake Outlet. That meeting was on May 12th. They will be starting survey work this week. We sent out landowner notification letters to any of the properties that they would need to access. And they were supposed to get ahold of Megan if they didn't want anyone to access their property. They're just looking for elevations and kind of wetland boundaries is what they're looking for during that survey. Myself and Vanessa and Brad did attend the First Man Lake Improvement District Board Meeting on May 17th. I think it went really well. There was quite a few people, I think, that showed up there. They're still working out how to do some things, but it, you know, everything's really new to everyone. And there is some legal review that they have to consider because there's going to be multiple agreements with transferring the grant into the lid name instead of Scott County's. So I'll be helping them with some administrative paperwork to help that transition as far as getting them and helping them update the actual grant application. There's some paperwork that goes with the grant agreement. So I'm going to be kind of ghostwriting or helping them along with that. So we'll be scheduling future meetings with the lid to kind of help through the whole transition. Megan did check with our highway department on whether they could assist us with construction supervision for the outlet. And they did respond that they can do that. So we did let them know that we're, we're anticipating construction of the outlet for winter of 2023. If we can continue to follow our timeline. But there are lots of things that happen, have to happen during that time period. So we'll, we'll make adjustments to the timeline if needed. As part of this whole project, Minnesota statute does require that we notify the chairs and ranking minority members of specific committees in the House and the Senate that were starting the project. So I've been working on that, on how to do that notification. I have the names of all the people that I need to notify. I'm just not sure how they want to be notified, a phone call, an email, a letter. So I'm trying to work that out with some contacts at the state legislature. So some of the takeaways from the McMahon lid meeting where I am gonna help them update that application. They'd like to know kind of when that cutoff is of when they have to have the grant agreement with the DNR so that the, the whole project can continue, hopefully on time. There's some agreements that we have to do with them. And then there's bylaws. So they have to create some bylaws that need to be finished up before Brad can incorporate them into an order with the legislature and then bring that up to a board meeting. So so we're working through it, but there's still some steps. And Lisa Quinn was also there in attendance. Lisa, do you have any comments on any takeaways that you got from the meeting at all, or?
Not really. Thank you. I just enjoyed listening to how well-informed everybody was and Noah did a great job in, in coordinating the meeting. The Pousers and the Jerrisons were present at the meeting and Ken Powitz, I believe his name is, offered to provide the Spring Lake Township Board with updates and the progress of his projects there. So it remains to be seen on, you know, if we hear from them in the near future.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions on the McMahon Outlet project before I move on to other updates? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on. Lake surveys, all the pre-treatment surveys were completed over the last two weeks. McMahon has been treated. Cedar will be treated tomorrow. And Odellton Falls should be treated soon. I just need to get the kind of treatment delineation maps to the DNR and PLM so that the DNR can approve those permits as well. PLM has agreed to help with those polygons. For some reason, our ArcMap software overestimates acreage. When I draw it out in there, there's some kind of I don't know, little fluke with the, how it calculates acreage. So it overestimates and then on the ground, it's really less acreage than what's created in the map. So PLM has offered free of charge to create those polygons. So I'm going to let them do that. I just received an email today. I don't know if you remember me talking about how we applied for the DNR Aquatic Invasive Species Control Grant. A few months ago, I heard today that we actually were awarded a grant for cedar. It's a two-year grant for $20,000. We can't use any of the funds until an agreement is executed. So we won't be able to use any of the funds this year towards cedar. But we'll have the full amount, the 20,000 to use next year. I did attend the Cedar Lake Improvement District Annual Meeting on May 10th. Myself and Shelby Roberts gave a presentation. I gave just a quick presentation on climate change and warming surface waters and what that means for lakes. I did talk a little bit about AIS detectors training that's open right now. So we were looking for volunteers for somebody who would want to take that training and, and help kind of keep an eye out for any kind of new infestation. Talked about the nine elements goals for Cedar Lake and what those look like. And then I give them the update on Zilplankton sampling of cedar. And while we were out on our pre-treatment survey on May 10th, we had hired bar engineering to do a Zilplankton sample again on cedar. If you remember, last year, we had them do one in late July. We had saw such good water transparency in early May in Cedar. We were trying to figure out why that was. So we took a Zilplankton sampling a little bit late. The recommendation was to take it again the following year in early spring. So that's why we have that scheduled. So I'm still waiting for the report on that. But when I do receive that, I'll update you on those results. Watercraft inspections are underway. They started the weekend of the 13th and they started on cedar. We are a little concerned. I don't know if everyone here has heard, but about two weeks ago, during the pre-treatment survey on Spring Lake, a zebra muzzle was found, a single zebra muzzle. I have not received an official notification from the DNR that it does have zebra muzzles, but I was told that by staff that one was found. So if it is spreading to spring, cedar is possibly next. So we want to make sure the whole idea of the watercraft inspections is to prevent the spread of these aquatic invasive species. So I had them start on cedar. They do have more staff hired now. So we have eight inspectors authorized to do inspections in Scott County. So it was a little bit of a slow start for them to get people hired because they weren't getting a lot of applications. But now we have eight, and so hopefully we can get every lake staffed that we have contracted with them for. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, next up is the one Watership One Plan report out. And actually, there's nothing to report because we were supposed to have a meeting last Thursday, but they pushed it back a week this month. So we haven't had a meeting since our last funding commission meeting. So nothing new there. So I think we can probably just move on to new business. And Vanessa, if you're on, or I don't know, Ryan, if you're going to take over here.
Madam Chair, it looks like probably Vanessa's away here. So I can kind of do a brief rundown of our annual report. So just so everyone's aware, we do have this posted on our website and we did send in a copy or notifying Bowser that it's done and complete and that we had it up there by the deadline. So just want to kind of go through this and give you some highlights. We won't go through everything in the report. But just kind of picking and choosing a few of the bigger kind of items that we worked on. So first, we, every year, we have kind of a lead story. And this one kind of relates to, we had two larger grants we were working on for a while. One was the targeted watershed grant through Bowser. But piggybacking on that one, we also had an EPA grant that was about a half a million dollars that we that we were working with MPCA on. And so the write-up is just kind of going through what we use the funds for. You know, it was predominantly CIPs, costure projects. And then we also had a component for updating our story map. So we, even beyond now the grant ending, you know, we still are updating our story maps. Tommy and I are kind of working on that. But the write-up is just kind of going through and highlighting the grant and kind of thanking the participants of it. One neat thing that came out of that grant was we had over, or we had 1,100 acres of cover crops. That was, they were planted through that grant, which is, is pretty remarkable. So that's, you know, one of the areas that we're trying to focus on is our cover crops, soil health and runoff reducing practices. So it was a success in that regard that we had that many acres planted of cover crops. Moving on, so capital improvement project. So we didn't have any new capital improvement projects like the stream banks or the ravine stabilizations that we've done in the past. We are now starting on them in 2022 for construction in 2030. So those will likely kind of be taking their spots. But we did have some maintenance on some of our projects where we're doing some willow stakings behind a cedar tree eventment. So this was one of the CIPs that for kind of a few different reasons, we didn't pursue it as actual construction, but we did try to work with the landowner and kind of some alternative ideas. So it was enhancing it with some of those stakings. There's a seep up on the side hill. And we're curious, one of our consultants in the past had kind of talked about maybe putting willow stakes into groundwater, seeping out of, you know, a bluff in the situation. So we'll circle back and see if those started to grow. But it was kind of an experimental thing, just to see if we could get some growth on this, the face of this. And then we also had a riparian buffer planting that had a herbicide carryover and it killed a number of plants. And so we're kind of assessing it in 2020. And then in 2021, we actually did the replanting of it and everything's going really well. So I have checked that site out a few times after we did the planting. And I think we're in good shape with that one. Continue on here. Our technical assistance and caution program. So we actually had an uptick in the number of projects that we had from the previous year. And the neat thing is, we talked about, you know, what are sort of the emphasis of the practices that we want to put in? And runoff reducing practices and soil health are some of the highest. And native grasses is our, by far, the, the practice that we did the most of in 2021. So and then cover crops is kind of in that second place spot. So it's good to see. It was a good year. You know, the WMO costs were a little bit higher than what we would normally see. But that's a little bit to be expected because we were kind of on the downswing of some grants. And so I would expect this to not be so heavily on the WMO costs in 2022. Now that we've got a number of grants that kind of started up late last year. So we're in full swing on those. Here is the highlighted cost share projects. So every year, we take one project that we think represents or is a good one to showcase. And this is actually one that came to the WPC meeting. So if you remember, there was a Scott Sharkey Wetland Restoration Project in Blakely Township. And so that was the project we chose to highlight. In a lot of times, we choose something that is a little bit unique. And so we had a, you know, a run on some good wetland restoration projects. So I thought it was important to kind of continue to highlight those. This one, I believe it was eight basins that Scott put in. So, you know, quite a bit. And they did upland treatment as well. So he's got this all planted to native grasses too. So kind of a neat project to kind of highlight. So it goes to show kind of the before photo, before we did anything during construction. You can see some of the equipment out there. They were breaking the tie lines. And then this was kind of shortly after the basin spilled up. So that was kind of the project we chose to highlight. We'll continue. So I'll kick it over to Melissa here. She's gonna talk about a couple of the items on the report.
Thanks, Ryan. So in the past, we, in this section of the report, we've done mostly a narrative with numbers. And if you could just scroll down to the tables, Ryan, that I inserted in here. Okay, right there. Yep. So Shelby started tracking all the activities a little bit differently in these spreadsheets. And you can sort different information. So these are all the articles that were written in 2021. And so I kept some of her information, such as what the target audience is, what the MS4 category is, how it was distributed and audience reach. I thought that was kind of interesting information. And it's, I think it's being a little bit more transparent as far as what we're actually doing and how many people we're reaching with our education outreach. And then if you can just scroll a little bit further to the next table. So those are all articles. And then events is kind of the separate table. And even though a lot of what the events that we did in 2021 had to do with our watershed-based funding grants that were geared towards chloride reduction and bacteria, there are other events that, that were done too. And including the dates so that you can, you know, people can see how much work was really happening with that program over the year. And I just kind of wanted to get some feedback from everybody. Do, do you like this? Do you like the table? Should we continue to do that in future annual reports? Or did you just like the narrative, which made it a little bit shorter? Does anybody have any thoughts?
I like the table.
You do?
Yep.
Which is Shay here too. I like the table too. I think it's a good information on there.
Cool. Okay, great. Well, we'll continue to do that then in future annual reports. And then the next section I just wanted to touch on is lake water quality. So if you can scroll to the graphs of each lake. So interesting, in 2021, pretty much all the lakes we can see. So the purple line on the graph is total phosphorus and the green line is chlorophyll A. And then there's a clear area, you can see clear water area. Pretty much all lakes showed more water clarity. So you could see deeper into the water. And total phosphorus and chlorophyll A dropped in 2021. If you just want to slowly scroll through the graphs, Ryan, sulfur McMahon, it dropped also. And Odell. And then Thole. The only difference in Thole is there was a little bit of an uptick in chlorophyll A, which could, you know, I'm not quite sure what happened there, but my guess would be, you know, Thole is a little bit shallower. It mixes a little bit quicker than possibly some of the other lakes and maybe some phosphorus in the water column that caused chlorophyll A to to be a little bit more productive than some of the other lakes. But just overall, all the lakes pretty much had, you know, a drop in, in some of the parameters that we saw. So that's all I had.
Melissa, a question on that. Would that have anything to do with how dry it was? Is normalized or anything like that?
I didn't normalize the data, no. But that, that was another thought too, that, that, you know, there wasn't really much for runoff. So yes, it could have something to do with the drought. I didn't compare that with like other drought years, if there was some in the data that we've been collecting. But that would be a good comparison, interesting comparison.
So I can kind of continue on highlighting just a few more things before we wrap it up and take any questions. So we did start a macro inverted monitoring program last year. So we did sampling on Sand Creek and the Credit River. So we wanted to incorporate that into our monitoring and data collection. So here are two site locations. This is on the Credit River is down in Hidden Valley Park in the city of Savage, closer to the confluence with the Minnesota River. And then Sand Creek is actually just downstream of the falls. So you can see the waterfall here. So there was a pretty good stretch through there that we were able to do the monitoring on. So we continue to expand that program going forward, looking at other streams like Porter, Raven and Roberts Creek and seeing if we can find some monitoring sites on those too. So we'll continue to update that page kind of going forward. Jump down here a little ways. Getting into the, the financial side of things, kind of where we, where we ended up kind of in the year. And then also, this can be the last thing we touch on. So this is related to our caution projects where we track phosphorus removal or reduction, I should say, through our program. And you'll notice 21 was kind of a higher year. And we had that happen in 17 and 19. And we changed our process a little bit. So in 17, we started to just collect projects that are focused on phosphorus. So not every project is focused on phosphorus. But the, the only thing I can kind of tell by those three years is that we just didn't get maybe a handful of projects that, that make the total pounds removed jump up. You notice each of them are just really low compared to all the other years. And looking back, it's, it's really just a matter of a few projects, oddly enough, that can really affect those numbers. And so if you just don't get those really high phosphorus reduction numbers, the graphs start to look like this. So, you know, we do targeting. And so, you know, this year, we're able to do a little bit more targeting to start. And so hopefully, we can see kind of better numbers in that being reduced in the future. But I just kind of wanted to explain now a little bit why, why we're seeing those spikes coming through. And then it just goes into the work plan, you know, what we completed and what we have ongoing. So it's just an update on all those. And then it gets into our 2022 work plan and then budget. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Ryan and Melissa. Quick question before we move on. It looks like this is an action item. What action were you guys looking for for this?
So the action would be approval from the WPC of the annual report.
Oh, okay. Okay, first, do we have any questions? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the report? Or, yeah, just have the WPC approve the report?
This is Virgil. I will make a motion to approve the annual report as presented today.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Shay, I'll second the motion.
So with Vanessa gone, I get my first roll call. So we'll go through everybody. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Schmidt, are you out there?
Yep, I.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
And then we're gonna see if Commissioner Phil is out there. Commissioner Phil? So I, I can't tell. Commissioner Phil, are you there? So I, I can't, Madam Chair, I can't tell if that's Commissioner Phil or not that has called in. So the numbers I have for him don't match up to that one. But that's not to say that it doesn't have an updated number.
I, I mean, I think we just need a to have a majority pass, right? So I think either way, we're okay.
Yep.
And then maybe Commissioner Phil, if you wanted to follow up with Ryan. If you do have a new phone number, if you were here and, and have any other questions or anything from the meeting today.
And then we do have Commissioner Beerling as well.
Hi.
Okay. Yes, I'll follow up with Commissioner Phil after the meeting.
Right, that has passed. So we can move on to Melissa with the Aquatic Invasive Species Rapid Response.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we've been getting new infestations recently. And this was always on my to-do list to create a rapid response plan on what do we do? What is our response if we get a new infestation in a lake, in the county, or in the WMO? And we really didn't have a plan written for it. So this is basically lays out what we need to do, most specifically for zebra muzzles. But there are other AIS authors that we could get, but there really wasn't any detailed information from anyone. Because I did get different examples of plans from other organizations. And most of them, most of the rapid response plan was geared towards zebra muzzles. Nobody wants to get zebra muzzles in their lakes. So I don't know if anyone had a chance to look through this, but it is very detailed about what to do for zebra muzzles. But any other AIS that we might find or suspect, basically, we follow what the DNR's guidance is. So it stays pretty clearly in there that basically the DNR has to say, the DNR is the guiding agency on what to do if we do get a new infestation of something. But I also wanted to make sure that there was some information about communication. Now, who's, who's the lead agency for the county? How should communication happen? So there is a diagram in there towards the end of the plan. But I, I did have a meeting with a couple of staff from Harley Spring Lake Watershed District, and they reviewed it and gave me feedback. And they're on board, you know, with supporting this. So my plan is to, you know, introduce this to you, ask if you have any feedback. If you don't, we are looking for a recommendation to approve the draft, which I will then later this year incorporate into our larger countywide AIS prevention plan. And I update that every two years. So I do have to have a meeting later this year with some of the partners with that to see if there's any updates that, that they want included in that. And then my plan was to incorporate this as probably like an appendix to it. But we just needed something to say, these are the steps we need to take if we do have, you know, a new introduction into one of our lakes. So, so with that, I'll stand for any questions anyone might have.
Questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the draft version of the rapid response?
This is Commissioner Beerling. I'll make the motion to approve, recommendation to approve the grant, the report.
All right. And do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll make a second.
All right, Ryan, I think you're up.
Melissa, do you want to do the roll or do you want me to do the roll?
Because you've got like lots more to do after this.
It makes no difference. I can, Madam Chair, if you want me to, I can do it right now.
Oh, it doesn't matter to me who does it. Yeah, I just.
I have the list. Okay, so Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Thank you.
Commissioner Phil, hi.
Thank you, Commissioner Phil. We weren't sure if that was you or not. Now we know.
It is me. Sorry about, sorry about the technical difficulties. And so as we say, OE, operator error.
Okay.
But I am up.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think that was everybody. So that has been approved. And we can move on to Ryan's new business, the Nick Slavic Wetland Restoration Application.
And Chair Commissioners, so this is the first of a few applications that we've got on the agenda tonight. So first one is Nick Slavic. He lives in Kalina Township, Section 20. It's around the St. Benedict area. And I can certainly pull it up on the screen too, if you'd like. But this wetland is drained by a ditch. And the proposed restoration would be kind of filling in and doing a ditch plug to increase the capacity of the wetland and reduce runoff. With that, it'll also improve the value, habitat and diversity of that wetland as well. So the estimated cost of the project for the construction of a berm is $1,690. The proposed amounts are $1,521 from the WMO and 169 from the landowner. The proposed funding source is the local general fund, which does have sufficient funds for the project. As per our docket, all wetland restorations go through the screening committee. And the SWCD did review this at the meeting last week and recommended approval. One thing I will note is it actually does have pretty decent runoff reduction for, you know, what we're paying into it. So we're just paying for the construction costs on, on this project. So it is normally a runoff kind of rate that we use as sort of what, what we think is a good project or what the benefit rate could be not as good as $500 per acre foot. And so, you know, we're at 84. So doing pretty good in this project. With that, I'll say for any questions.
Ryan, if this isn't currently drained, it just has a ditch outlet. So is the ditch plug gonna just create some additional? Ryan, if this isn't currently drained, it just has a ditch outlet, so is the ditch plug gonna just create some additional bounce and dead storage?
Correct. It gives the wetland a little bit more depth to it. So yes, it'll fluctuate a little bit more, raising the, the capacity a little higher. In a perfect world, yes, you will get a lot of bounce to it, because that actually helps kind of. With the runoff, you know, if it's always stays full, it's kind of like a cup, you know, that just overflows when you put a little bit more water into it, so. But this is essentially, you know, I guess making that cup a little bit bigger.
Yep. Okay, other questions for Ryan? And my guess is we will recommend approval to use our funds for this project. You need something along those lines? Or motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to use WMO funds for the Nick Slavic Wetland Restoration Project?
This is Virgil. I move that we approve the application for the Slavic project as presented.
And do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Casellius.
That motion.
All right, hopefully we got one of those to count. Ryan, you gonna call for?
Yep, I can do a roll here. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casellius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Schmidt. Let's see. Looks like we might have lost. Commissioner Schmidt. I did notice he was in and out a little bit earlier in the meeting, so we will move on. Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
All right.
Great, that motion has passed. We can move on to the Ed Knights. Let me know if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Streambank Stabilization.
Madam Chair, you're close. Needis is how you pronounce it. You, you might not guess it based on the spelling. So we've actually got two on deck for Ed Needis. He's also located in Kalina Township. So the first one is a stream bank stabilization project. Ed actually lives right on the East Raven Stream branch before the confluence of the east and west joining. So he's got erosion from. Along the stream bank here, and that's near his field crossing and also a culvert near County Road Two. The proposed method for stabilization is a bioengineering project, so it's similar to the one we're looking at in the annual report where you got the. Cedar trees and the live stakes that help stabilize it. So this one, this project would prevent sediment nutrients and entering rated stream. Estimated cost of the project is five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The proposed amounts are four thousand one hundred and sixty-five from the WMO. And then the landowner contributing one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. The proposed funding source is our newest Bowser Grant. It's the twenty twenty-one WBIF grant. Which we have a specific category for stream bank stabilizations. So we kind of broke them out into two categories, and stream bank and shoreline are in their own category, and then all the other ag BPs that we have are in a different category. So as per our docket, all stream bank stabilizations go through the screening committee for review or recommendation. SWCD did review this at their meeting and recommended approval. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Ryan on this one? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve funds for the stream bank stabilization project?
This is Commissioner Shay. I'll make a motion for the approval of the Ed Needis Streambank Stabilization Application.
And do we have a second?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll second that. Madam Chair, I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Casellius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt, I see you're back on.
Yep, I.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
All right.
That has passed. Let's move on to Mr. Needis's great stabilization application.
Madam Chair, so. Next site, we're not going too far down the road. It's same property, kind of same general location. It's actually, the great stabilization is proposed right around kind of where the stream bank is as well. So. So erosion's occurring at the edge of the field that leads directly to East Raven Stream, and this project would obviously prevent sediment nutrients from entering the stream. Estimated cost of the project is eight thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. The proposed amounts are split up a little bit more in this one, so we've got three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one from the WMO. Also, the SWCD with their Clean Water Fund would contribute three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one, same amount, and then the landowner would contribute eight hundred and thirty-eight. So we are using a combination of the, the grant itself and local general match funds. Which we have intended to kind of match that same grant, so. We do have sufficient funds for both projects. The reason it's here today is that the project exceeds a hundred dollars per ton of sediment. Which then causes a review here for the screening committee. The SWCD screening committee did review the project at their May nineteenth meeting and did recommend approval. So right here is where we've got our, the sediment costs. And so for the WMO, it's at a hundred and sixty-two dollars roughly, a little bit more. So that's, that's where it's coming to you for a recommendation.
Questions for Ryan here? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the funding for the Mr. Neese Grade Stabilization Project?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll make a motion to approve the Ed Knightis Stabilization Project.
And do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
And Chair Commissioners, we'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casellius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
All right, we have passed that one. And last up, Marvin Peters Shoreline Protection.
Madam Chair Commissioners, so this one is a little different, and I'll explain that. So this project actually came to you last year because it's a lake shore stabilization project. It was recommended for approval at that time. We had a cost estimate for the project. At twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. However, the landowner received two bids for the project, which is a requirement. If you're looking for an amendment, you need at least two bids. And the lowest of the two bids came in at thirty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five. And the higher of the two bids came in at forty-seven thousand four hundred and thirteen. So quite a bit different than what we had for the cost estimate. And the biggest thing, I'm gonna switch screens here, so. Can, can everyone see this? The SG three screen where the, with the arrow image?
Not yet. I still see your agenda.
Let me stop sharing and then I'll reshare. All right, how about now?
Yep, now we can see it.
Okay. So this is a joint project between Marvin Peters and his neighbor, Aaron Jasperson. So the project is right along here on the shoreline, goes across both projects, but Marvin is kind of the spokesperson for it, the one taking the lead. The issue we're running into is access, getting equipment down there. So the bids that they got back were actually using. Essentially, you know, a barge almost to, to bring in equipment from the lake to do the project. Sounds like it's, it's too difficult to get kind of equipment here between the houses, or there'd have to be some modifications done. To, to make it work, and so it's difficult, and that's reflected in both of those bids. So. I'm gonna switch gears back to the other, unless I'll stop there and see if there's any questions first about just. Higher bids and why we're experiencing that.
Ryan, this is Pam Casellius. I'm, I'm just curious, why your bid came in so much lower that you wouldn't maybe even anticipated some of those. Equipment challenges. I'm not pointing fingers or anything, just purely a question of interest.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Casellius, good question. So it's, it's not a common thing for that to happen, to have access issues. Most of the time, we, we don't have that, or, or with lake shore projects. Because the contractors are saying that it's best to come in through the lake. To my knowledge, we probably haven't had that ever happen before. So. It, it's possible it could have got caught, for sure, but it is a very unlikely. Scenario that kind of played out to where that the contractors are saying their best access is through the lake, which, you know, is, is not something we really see. So that, that's the, kind of the main reason.
Okay.
Any other questions before I switch gears and go back to the other screen?
You might be getting into some of this, Ryan, but what are they proposing for the restoration there? Are they hard armoring or?
So let me pull that back up here. Yeah, it's, it's. So I don't have the cost estimate here in front of me, but it looks like they're gonna do lifts, which is kind of a heavier duty. That's where they, they'll wrap the, the soil in a, you know, erosion control blanket. And kind of, they're basically modifying that slope leading down to the lake to. To stabilize it, if that makes sense, but it's in lifts, so. Kind of do this fabric encapsulated, filled in with soil, lay that down, and then they'll build on top of that. And, you know, they're kind of creating a more stable bank going back up. I do have a picture of the erosion as well that maybe would benefit the group to look at that too. Just so you can kind of see the erosion that's occurring. So can everyone see that?
Yep.
So it's not, it's not very severe, and that's part of this too. I, I'm sorry, I have to keep switching screens to show you all this stuff, but I think it's very important that we're kind of go through this layer by layer. So it does not have a really high benefit to it. It's, it's quite low. It's around a pound of sediment in a pound of, or sorry, a ton of sediment in a pound of phosphorus. So pretty minimal. I'll show you the fact sheet, and I'll kind of explain, you know, the, the previous application, what we were looking at when, you know, it was approved. So they've got kind of some of that hard armoring that's already there, that's probably providing some stabilization. You know, there's, there's trees there too, that are, they're probably holding it together fairly well, you know, which is causing the, the lower erosion numbers. So last, second to last screen share switch. So let me pull up. I'm gonna pull up his old. Fact sheet, so you can see that. All right, so hopefully everyone can see this. So what it was approved at before is nearly fifteen thousand from the WMO, the cooperator contributing the remaining balance. And why this one was, you know, something we were looking at, because when you look at the, the numbers, they're quite high. You know, when we're saying we're, we're trying to target around a hundred dollars, you know, a ton of sediment, this is quite a bit higher than that. We, we were pushing because this is part of our EPA grant that we had just received and kind of getting a project going. Because with the limited. Locations that we can actually use those funds on. We can only use them in Pika Creek, Watershed, Cedar Lake Watershed, and Porter Creek Watershed. And with Cedar Lake, you know, we did a sub watershed assessment and identified some projects. And we, we didn't have very much luck at getting those projects on the ground. Predominantly, the, the projects we're getting are lake shore, and so that's why this one. Even though the numbers were higher was kind of an emphasis, because we, you know, we have to, to spend the, the funds. And so, you know, that kind of played a role in that. However. You know, I don't have the, the numbers of, of what, you know, the proposed. Increase would be, but obviously it's gonna be higher than this fourteen hundred, so it was already pretty high. And then, you know, this, it's just gonna push it up higher with. With any potential approval of additional cost share dollars. So now I switched it back to the packet. Can you see the packet or not?
Yep, we can see the packet.
All right, so now I want to just kind of get into. Where we're, where we're at. So the new estimate is based off that low bid, so it's the thirty-five thousand four seventy-five. With this, there's a potential increase. Of two thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents, which would bring it up to seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And, and why it's a lower amount is, and that represents fifty percent cost share. Is that. The, the benefits are just not, not that high to. To sort of justify going, you know, much, much higher than that. We can, there isn't a maximum cost share rate of seventy percent for the, the project. But going that high is really going to have those, those numbers. You know, get further away from the target of what we're trying to, to go for. We didn't, we're not proposing using any more of the EPA dollars on the project, kind of for that reason, that we have to, you know, save some of those for other projects. So we've got environmental benefit goals that we're trying to hit with that grant too, and not only, it's this balancing act of. Of getting good projects, but in hitting our goal, so. It can be tricky at times. So I'm kind of, I'm throwing a lot of information at everybody. The, the one thing that is a little bit different, and I'll point it out here, is that this application did go to the SWCD screening committee. But did not get recommended for approval. So they did not approve the increase on their end. However, our process is still that it goes to the WPC, and we get a recommendation from. This advisory committee as well.
Do we have any?
I'll stand for any, sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, no, that's right. I was just gonna start jumping in with questions. Do we have any concerns that we wouldn't be able to spend the, these funds elsewhere? If it sounds like it was trouble, we had some trouble getting applications, is that kind of ramped up? And do we have a pile of them that we still need to fund, or what's that status?
Madam Chair, good question. So what we do is every month, we have a ranking and batching meeting. And at that meeting, we sit down and we lay out all those cost share dollars, you remember from the SWCD report, all the available funds that we have. And each of those pots of funds have different criteria associated. And each of those pots of funds have different criteria associated with it. Could be benefits, could be locations, it could be specific practices. So we kind of pick and choose what's the best fit for funding for each of those projects that come through the door in that month. We are dwindling fast on our local general fund. So, you know, we set aside a little over a hundred thousand for that local general fund this year. And then we have other funding sources for grants and all that, but the local general fund provides the most flexibility. And allows us to use it, you know, in piggybacking situations. And that funding source is getting quite low. So that's playing a role in why the increase is small as well. Because potentially, it could take funds away from another project that comes in the door. That could have higher benefits. And, and then, you know, if we don't have the funds, you know, then they have to either wait, or they potentially don't do the project. You know, if they so choose.
But the, the EPA funds, are there other projects that that could go to?
Oh, yes.
The fourteen thousand.
Madam Chair, yes, so if, so the landowner still has those funds available. So if, if they wanted to go forward with the fourteen thousand one ninety-five, they, they've already been approved for that. And they can go forward with that if they would like. But if they choose not to, if, if no more cost share is approved for them, and they choose not to go forward. Then yes, we would unencumber them on this project, and then we would, you know, look for other projects coming in the door. And targeting them for that, that money. And we have a few years left still.
Okay. Oh, opening up to other questions, other questions, comments on this?
Ryan, this is Commissioner Shay. So just to be clear, I'm trying to remember this from back before. But we're still looking at the erosion control blanket, so the courier logs, right, for shoreline stabilization?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Shay, so I don't, so the, this is a lift. Not the choir logs. I can, I can quick check, but I, I'm not seeing the choir logs. As part of what they're proposing here. I think it's, it looks like it's predominantly those lifts. It's, um, you, you might be familiar, the Levy project on McMahon Lake, they use lifts on that one.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
What happens if we approve this and the SWCD screening committee does not?
So that, that can happen, and so then we. Or I should say Vanessa has approval authority up to, I'll let her jump in. I think it's fifty thousand, yeah, fifty thousand. So, yes, you, you can, you can choose to go whichever direction you want. And then essentially, it, you know, the next step would be the WMO board, which was the Scott County Board. But there is also the designation that a certain dollar threshold does not have to go to them, and this would be under that.
Okay. And then also, just to clarify, since we would only be increasing our costs about three thousand dollars. The homeowners are coming up with the extra eleven, eleven or so?
Correct, yes, they would be, yes, with the increase, they would be responsible for the remaining balance.
And Ryan, this is Commissioner Casillas. Was the property owner. Were they given, like, we would, we would fund up to a maximum of, and, or. Or is this sort of a surprise to them, like proportionally, they would think, okay, we were gonna do fourteen thousand versus what they were putting in? Would we now up our ante to keep those portions the same? Do you understand what I'm asking?
And Chair, Commissioner Casillas, yes. So I, I have not personally talked to the landowners. One could deduct, they probably were surprised, you know, based on the, the estimate to what their bids actually came back with. So I, I have to assume there probably is some level of surprise there. The way we have our docket set up is that we try to maximize, to the extent possible. The cost share we can give out to the residents, you know, for these projects. It's, it's kind of what makes the, the program so successful, is that we're, we try hard. To, to provide that assistance to them, the financial assistance, to make these projects a little easier. To fund, you know, when I look at it, you know, that's a lot of funds that the landowner potentially has to pay to, to do the project. So there's no promises ever with the, the rates. We try, and there's a maximum. And so originally, they were at the, you know, the max of the seventy percent. But there is no minimum either, so, you know, we, we don't set some sort of minimum that they can receive, too. And, and in some situations, it's, you know, it, you know, we're, we're driven by water quality benefits. And so we have to keep that in mind when we're being fiscally responsible, too, of, of trying to fund. Projects that kind of fit our plan and our goals as well, while still trying to provide what we can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions for Ryan?
This is Commissioner Pin. So Ryan, it's not so much a question, it's just sort of a opinion at this point. I'm really torn on this one, and I'd like to see us help the landowner to the level of fifty percent, no more. But the benefit is, seems to be so small for the amount of dollars spent. It's already was way out of line, and this additional cost even puts it further out of line. And in order to do that, I think we need to have a really solid justification as to why we are doing this. When it's so far out of the line with our goals there. So, and so far, I haven't really come up with a good enough argument to convince me. So just, just sort of my opinion at this point.
Yep, and I'll jump into, I agree with Commissioner Pin. I just can't see funding this anymore, since it's got so low treatment rates. So that's where I'm gonna fall, when we get to the point of asking for a motion. Does anyone have arguments for? Do we wanna kind of lay that side of it out?
Madam Chair Commissioners, there, you know, so the landowner, depend, depending on how this goes. You know, they've, they've got kind of a decision to make. It's, there's nothing preventing them from applying in the future as well. So. You know, the, the benefits aren't, aren't likely to change much unless something significant, you know, happens out there. But there is always the possibility that in another year, where funding maybe isn't as tight. That it's, it's possible to offer more. It's just given the landscape of where we're at right now. This is kind of what at least staff drew up as, as trying to still help. But, you know, not, not funding to the maximum.
And I guess I would ask that I would encourage them to get additional bids, because that's two. And really, if they had another one that came down three thousand, they're committed to what they were already gonna put into it, so.
Madam Chair, yes, that's a, it's a good point. They could find another contractor that. That potentially finds a, a different way of doing it, or a different time of the year. You know, I'm not sure if maybe winter is, is a possibility or not, you know?
Question I would have is that if the landowner was able to negotiate with their neighbors. Is it a possibility that you could get a land easement to do this project and not have to come in by water? Which would then lower the cost, and it might have to be done, like you said, in the wintertime or something like that. But, and it, it would show a real commitment from neighbors that they all think it's a good project and willing to help out. So maybe that's one thing I'd suggest that the landlord look at.
And Chair, Commissioner Pin, yes, I think all options are kind of on the table to the landowner. At this point of, of, you know, trying to see if there's alternatives as well.
Well, hearing no more questions, and I can open it up for comments again. Do I just ask for a motion to approve? Or can we ask for a motion to not approve?
Yes, you can open it up, Madam Chair, you can open it up to just a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, do we have a recommendation on this project?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pin. Yes, I'd like to make the recommendation that this project be tabled for now. And the landowners look at alternate approaches, both from a standpoint of getting the price reduced. Or a different approach to solving this problem, and then if funds available in the future, bring it forth to us again.
Okay, so to clarify, the recommendation would be to not provide the additional two thousand eight hundred and forty-one and fifty.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Shay, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Commissioners, I think I saw Vanessa back here. It's up to you, Vanessa, whether you want me to roll or have me do it.
Sorry, I'll go ahead. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pin.
Hi.
Commissioner Casillas.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion is to not increase the tax grant for this property at this time.
Great, thank you. Alright, I scrolled through here and lost my agenda, but I think we're at the end here. Yep, looks like we are all done for today. I know we'd love to all stay on, but do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? See, I knew.
This is Commissioner. It's so funny.
This is Commissioner Casillas. I'll motion to dis, to, to adjourn the meeting.
Alright, do we have a second?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll second that.
Alright.
Thank you, okay, I'll do, you don't hurt our feelings if you want to go home, it's okay. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pin.
Hi.
Commissioner Casillas.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Bye.
Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you so much, folks.
Alright. Yep, see everybody next month.